...the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, all members are present. Any announcements before we begin? Okay, we need approval of the agenda, a motion? Second?
Second.
Those in favor? We also have a number of meetings for minutes to approve. The meeting on January ninth, an executive session, and audit committee meeting January ninth. A meeting on January seventeenth, as well as a budget study session, and executive session on January thirtieth. A motion? Second? All those in favor? Public comment session, we ask you to walk to the one of two microphones, give us your name and address, so we need to follow up, we can do so. If anyone has any questions or comments at this time? Okay, then we will move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. Claus. I'm going to turn it right over to our building principal here at Clarence Center, Colleen Coggins.
Hi, I'm Colleen, I'm principal at Clarence Center. We're going to introduce something new at Clarence Center this year is we've started to put together something called a sensory room. And I'm going to tell you a little bit about why we're doing a sensory room. And I have Anne Marie Olden there, she's our occupational therapist who's throughout the district. A couple of months ago, back in the fall, I approached her and said, what do you think about putting together a sensory room for Clarence Center? Very excited and absolutely. So we did a sensory room based on a grant that we received from the Plant School enrichment foundation. And that's about a thousand dollars to do things to create a very small space that we have to put together this sensory room. We're going to go down to the sensory room in a few minutes, and I have a student that's going to show us how it can be used and how the kids can use it, and grades can run into grade five. And it's for everybody, there's lots of different activities that adjust all the different needs of kids, from visual to auditory, to more gross motor, and that's what the expert is going to tell us a little bit more about. And my friend Ryan is going to give us more information, and you can see just what kind of benefits the kids will get. It's a nice space, so a teacher could bring a child down, an aide can bring a child down, they can bring a group of kids down to the room, and it has a variety of different needs. It's to use collectively, it's not a reactive kind of place to go. It's really just to adjust the sensory diet of these children that everyone can benefit from. Even since we've put it in, I've been finding that teachers have even wandered in there. We're sitting on a crash mat, we're playing with a weighted blanket, there's a lot of different neat things that we can do in there. Some of the needs that are adjusted through the sensory room are touch, sight, hearing, smell, taste, the vestibular, that's like more of the gross motor movement, and there's the proprioceptive, that's an OT word too. And we have lots of things down there, from trampolines, to balls to roll on, to a mat, you're going to see all of that. We did paint it in a darker color to have it a little bit more soothing. We're working on getting a dimmer on the lights, so we can dim the bright light off the lights a little bit, set up a little space. We're going to do some neat things down there when we go to them. One thing is they have, such we say, we all kind of do people's parole hair, and who gone with things like that, and we all have these kinds of things. And some of our students are easily overwhelmed by school, and all these types of things happen in school. And one of the things too, I want to say, we talked about, even some don't like noise in catheters with these progressive lights or fire lamps. We have a variety of those students who have those needs, not just at Clarence Center, but at other schools. And often sensory needs are mistaken for behavior, this is our biggest challenge at OTs, is the behavior of the sensory. But we're going to probably show through them having this room, and someday that we're going to keep that, it's sensory things, or behaviors like that. And then students, or sometimes senses, they want to cover their ears, sometimes you'll see that, and so we're trying to reach out to it. And there are always people moving, certain ones that they just, because even all the time they must come home from, to relax a little bit, to catch a plan, to help them focus better. Same thing, sensitivity to sounds, some picky eaters, some of life sensory stimulation, like they don't want to, um, actually, yes, we don't want to bat on or boot, and they're just out of their heart, or they won't wear jeans, or they're sleeping, or things like that. Not bad, you know, hyperactivity, or a fear of crowds, and they have to be careful, like, they're overstimulated after lunch, and they can't calm down until they're stressed. And sometimes they might have trouble with risk-taking, and they might be talking and crashing and things, we have that kind of thing to help them with that. The goal is obviously to manage them, to manage any students struggling with attention and self-control. And they may not mean to, need to be, they just cannot take over, like you can just see that, they're just, they don't know what it feels to feel like, what does school feel like, that kind of thing. So we help them to manage that. And then hopefully when they leave, they'll be more calm and relaxed, and they're ready to engage in academic tasks. I think we have one idea of a student after lunch, keep a little bit wound up, come in there, spend five minutes in that class, and hopefully he can help them to take that down. Also, on occasion, we'll have someone who lives downtown, we'll be made her out first, that something's going on, something, you know, sometimes they come with a bad idea. And like an adult will say, I'm having a bad day, or I'm sad about something, a child might act out, and so they may leave this parent's house, you know, come out of your state, your classmate, and then continue with their academic habits. The student, they can help them, help them to calm down, and help them out. And obviously, we want to teach them, hoping to, if things just slow down, if things just slow down, if you don't want to feel like, that's what we're trying to do. That's able to help them in their classroom, and unbelievable. The nice thing about the grant room, we found out that we did receive the grant in the fall, around December. Mr. DiFascali was showing up a couple of days, a week, with big packages for us, so after the first of the year, we were able to put everything in the room. We were fulfilling the grounds, and had some carpet tiles put in, had the room painted in a calming color. And we just finished the room, I want to say in the past week or so. We're introducing the room to the faculty and staff at Clarence Center tomorrow at our faculty meeting. And Anne Marie has been introducing our kids to it throughout the week that she works with, as well as kids in other classrooms that we thought would benefit from this room as well. It's the big hot commodity in the building right now, kids keep walking by and saying, when can I go play in the blue room? There's a lot of neat things for them. So we're finding different kids that would benefit from it that we weren't even aware of, and just using it deductively and making sure it's available and everything. So if it's okay to you, we wanted to walk down and try to explain a little bit about the cool things that are down there.
Colleen, what's the name of your fifth grader that's down there?
His name is Ryan. He's down there with mom, and he's going to stand right at the doorway and talk to you about each of the different senses, the things that we have in the room. And then if you kind of want to pop your head in, he can show you and demonstrate a couple of the things. He'd be very excited to talk to the room. In addition to thanking, we have something to give to you too, Karen Hill, Karen Hill has the room already, and so, um, Christine Barry, the psychologist there, and Debbie Gardner, the OTR there, they helped us, they, a lot of this has already been developed through them, so I want to go thank them to them.
So we invite everybody to take a trip to the sensory.
An open retriever.
Need a massage chair.
Is that cool? But if you could imagine that whole while, you don't have that kind of need, but it's kind of neat.
We're going to pass this around to, as a family conference, it's interesting. There's also smell, like the fragrance, mister green lemon, lavender, and vanilla.
The aromatherapy.
We also have taste, which we, which apparently we're not allowed to, considering to all the allergy problems we have. But we have precipitous, proprioceptive, which is like the heavy ball, trampolines, large, and the large highlight ball. This, this is an example of how many you do. Basically, you do five tosses with the ball, which is pretty heavy, like five.
You do on your hand, but they're very brave.
And this is what helps the class.
Sure.
Okay, the room will also be used for plant five-minute bike.
Sure. Five-minute body breaks, some might come in right after.
What we do is like, five, fifteen jumps on a trampoline, let's say we have so little time, or just do five right there. And we also, and we already are demonstrating the five-ball tosses, but we have those balls rolling over your back very firmly, which is another way. That helps.
Show how you walk out on your arms real slowly.
Yeah. There's a soccer game where you have to walk on your arms, go down, slide back, and then back. And you have to do this slowly, so that you don't lose balance. This makes you actually have to concentrate on what you're doing. A thirty years' period of sensory room is a very good safe room for experiencing a level. There's a weighted blanket, the little trampoline, the ball, the bubble wrap, the crash mat, rockers, bean chair, objects, cheap puddles, midget, and a relaxation.
You want to pass this, anyone heard this stuff? You've ever felt any of these things? It's going to be very addictive, I know, isn't it?
That's my favorite. So much of the blanket, remember? This one's about five pounds?
Yeah.
Pretty neat, right? And then Rubik's Cube. The, um, the Rubik's Cube.
Yeah.
A minute, yeah. Yeah, if you have any questions, while he does that, he is the pro. And Ryan gave us the idea for the Rubik's Cube and adding puzzles.
Because you actually have to concentrate on what you're doing. Like this one right here, I'm about to sell.
Seriously. She had it done in like, under a minute when I tried it.
Why do we do a Rubik's Cube, Ryan?
I did, I chose Rubik's Cube because you will basically move things, and you also have to think about where things are going, so that basically you can, you actually have to focus on what you're doing, so you have to calm down in order to actually be able to get at least one side. So this is one thing to see how calm down people are sometimes.
Except for us that we were.
Are there any questions?
Any questions for Ryan?
You did a great job explaining that.
Very nice, thank you. Great job, buddy. We're very impressed. You'd be even more impressed if you finished it.
I was going to ask you, Ryan, if you had any sort of suggestions from your friends and yourself of what actually goes into the room?
Yeah, I knew.
What you guys enjoy, like you said, the Rubik's Cube, right?
He gave us a lot of ideas, and part of the grant, we have gotten some, an Amazon gift card, so based on his feedback he gave us on Friday, we went on Amazon Prime and had our box delivered this morning, so we could finish off the things that he thought would be a good addition to the room. This was his top one that he said we were wrestling.
Yeah, I'm glad, even though I never even thought of that. The students who come in here, they can be referred through the school psychologist, the principal, or, I know, I was almost there, or, or, um, anybody else.
I'm mesmerized by that.
I know, I'm just second and third time seeing, and I'm like, wow. And I don't want him to tell me this more than he wants to, like, I can't, I need to cheat on it.
I know, I know, I tried to, I tried to jump, wow.
They're amazing.
I stumped the work. Thank you, Ryan.
We're going to get back to our meeting.
Yeah, and if anyone wants on the way out, we'll try the crash mat, if you don't have the crash mat, you can lay on it, yeah, I know, and that's so cool. And the students will always be in here with an adult, and we will have a timeline, we make sure it's not like, necessarily reboard, but try to get ahead of things, like proactive before they have a talk.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
The student charge account for the food service program. Couple of things came up, one of them, you'll see on the old method we used, actually identified a child, and it was common among districts, and it's one of the reasons why the regulations changed. You know, a child would receive a notice at the register if the account was in arrears. So, you know, that's something that, that we've stopped, but we do have to change our procedures that we put on the website. Then the other thing that we've done for, for many years, but the state and federal government are saying we actually have to have board approval to do that, is, once a child is, starts the school year, they may not have applied for free reduced, and they may not have sent us, or they might not have been on the download from the government with the food stamp number, or, or one of the numbers for a group that gives them a free reduced lunch. We've always backcovered what they owed. So if October came, and they were charging a few lunches, and then we get the report at the end of October that they qualify, we never charged them for that money that was owed. We always forgave that, in essence. But that has to have board approval, they're telling us now. So it's what we've done for many years, certainly, to the board, if we want to continue that practice. With our low free and reduced lunch count, it's literally pennies, when you look at it that way. So really, the, the amount of money isn't of substance, it's, do we want to continue that practice? Certainly, I'm recommending that we do. One of the other things that we did is we, we raised the threshold before we started making phone calls and sending letters to the families. Too many times, by the time you knew that your account on a Monday or Tuesday was in arrears, mom or dad would typically go online and add money to it. If you did that on the weekend, you already hit the low, low threshold that we were sending information out. So we put it to what we're considering a much more manageable number. So those are the kind of things that, that we changed in the policy. And like I said, a lot of that changes, and, and that's why the only piece that needs board approval of the procedure is the backfilling, once somebody becomes eligible for free reduced, that we forgive, in essence, that interim period. You see, I'll just continue, so if you have any questions, let me know. The two board seats for BOSEs are up for election. They, their nominations are due March twentieth. We do have another formal board meeting in between, but if there's anybody who wants to nominate someone for that, one of those two seats, you can do it if you'd like, or, or not, but you've got an extra meeting to think about that. So probably the most important items.
Okay, does any, are we adding an F four then, to make an adjustment to the procedures?
You know, it's probably a good idea to have that completely separate, so, yes, I, I think that is a good idea.
Okay, okay. So, or does, how about, does any, how about the financial reports? Anybody have any questions?
Any questions are pretty simple for this one.
I, I just had a question on the internal audit report. Everything seemed fine, but on page seven, it, it raised a question about the Envision tool not really having, I don't, it wasn't really clear to me, so I wanted some clarification on it. It sounded like there was a weakness in the tool for doing grant-based reporting, maybe, and, and I wanted to understand what that was a little bit better.
I, I don't think it was actually a weakness in the tool, I think there's just a learning curve.
Okay.
So the Envision software is, was brand new, and the, a lot of things took quite a while to, to get used to. The, the grant software is clumsy, but still works adequately. And we just have to work through the process of understanding the differences from the finance manager to the Envision piece. The other part of the internal audit, there were two things worth noting that I, that I put on the memo. Number one is, with all new procedures now for that, not only payroll, but other items, we always memorialize. You know, so we want, everybody who does a function, whether it's accounts payable, balancing, the treasures report, or, or payroll items, they memorialize everything, they do screenshots, so that somebody can fill in and follow through. Well, that's taking a while, because the software is quite a bit different. So that's something that they're recommending, and we certainly are going to be working on. The other thing that they recommend, which we know we're also working on, especially with the smart schools money, is we're getting, over the next couple of years, quite a bit of money for laptops, for tablets, for desktops, for various devices. And that coupled with the capital project, which has changed our network all around, we need to make sure that, again, those data centers that we have, while we're backing things up appropriately, all of that needs to really be, again, kind of memorialized, inventory procedures redone from what we were doing, and completely overhaul the procedures, again, to memorialize, so that if Dennis, our guy who does the backup all the time, isn't around, our other IT guys can step right in.
Any other questions? And then, motion for F one through F four, which would include the food service account procedures that Rick just went over, motion for those.
I'm going to make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, thank you. Dr. Patac?
Thank you, Mrs. Claus. Before you have a number of items, including a recommendation for a request for leave of absence, request for reinstatement to active employment. We also have a number of appointments, including two administrative positions, and we have the two individuals here this evening, Ms. Dribblebis, as well as Mrs. Dunkel, and we'll be very happy to have them join us and fill the gap that has been created by a couple of people leaving us. We also have a recommendation for academic intervention services. Under extracurricular, we have the addition of one supervisor spectators. You have the spring sports recommendation, this is for approval this evening. Also, two activity advisors, one at the high school, one at the middle school, and an addition and deletion to the substitute list.
Any questions on P one through P four?
Just a quick question on P one. This is a retroactive leave request, I'm assuming it's just because of the timing of the different meetings and so forth?
Timing of meetings, doctor's appointments, things like that.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
Motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you.
Non-instruction, you have two resignations, one for the purposes of retirement, a request for leave of absence, a request for an extension of a leave of absence, a request reinstatement to active employment, various appointments, including bus attendants, a teacher aide, as well as a cleaner, informational item, as well as additions and a deletion to the substitute list. You'll also see some retroactive items on this agenda also.
Okay, any questions on P five through P eleven? And a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Special needs and student activities?
Thirty-two committee on special education meetings. We're right in the midst of starting the annual review process for out-of-district students, so some of these are, some of the more expensive special ed placements that we have during the year. Fourteen preschool special ed recommendations for the board.
Any questions on S one or S two? And a motion to approve?
Motion.
All those in favor? Okay, board development policy.
We are initiating with this month, the review of the entire Board of Education Policy Manual. We're going to take it section by section. There are eight large sections to the Board Policy Manual. The first section is the 1000s sections, and it really deals with policies having to do with the Board of Education. Rick has put together all of the changes, and the board, along with the public, has received the policies with the annotated changes. This 1000s really didn't have too many, correct, Rick?
There's not too many. You know, I, I put a little note on the ones that did have changes, mainly the, the one of the most importance is probably adding the concussion clearance to the, to policy thirteen thirty-eight. You know, if, timing, what we'd like to do is, you know, you want to first read on these, certainly let us know if there's any kind of alteration. When a section is clean, and, and there's no other alterations, at the subsequent board meeting, we, we can seek your approval. And we'll try to keep it going, where at the next board meeting, we'll have the 2000s, the month after that, the 3000s. You know, we're just, at this point in time, we 1000s and 2000s are, are pretty generic. Once you get past that, my office is sending to other administrators different sections, so that they can review them in detail, make some recommendations. The BOSEs Policy Service does a nice job on, on changing all the items of the laws that have changed from probably about 2007, when the last time a lot of these were updated, some even older. So if that makes sense, that, that way of proceeding will, will continue.
Yeah, I, I, I was looking through them, and really, really minor things, but do you want to just have those be emailed, and, and we can kind of put them in for the next, next meeting?
And, and certainly, if, if you're, if, if changes are grammar and those kinds of things, we won't consider it a change, but if, if there's anything else, we'll want to bring it to you at another meeting, and take our time with this, and, and not rush section approvals. There's really no timeframe, other than what we impose upon ourselves.
And then the entire documents online, when it's completed, right?
Yes, absolutely.
And the entire old document is on right now. And, you know, normally, our policy on policies is, first read this month, voted on the next month. When we get into the student policies, there are many more of them, and we might want to take it a little more slowly.
Rick, if I could just ask a question here. You had mentioned in this that there is a required policy of the sixteen fifty section, all the other ones technically don't need to be there.
And I do want to bring that to the board's attention, because in Rick Mancuso's school district, I would have as few policies as possible. The sixteen fifty is the only, by law, required policy, and I'll note that every time we do a section. There's two things that, that we'll note. Number one, state education department, who governs us, will tell us what policies we need to have. In this section, it's only that one. The other thing is the New York State Controller's Office, when they do audits, while they do not technically govern us, and can't tell us what policy to have, they've made recommendations. None in this section, but in each subsequent session, section, I'll let you know what is required, and what is recommended by the controller. Everything else, if there's a policy in here that you think might be open, or too vague, or too tight, or whatever, you don't need to have it. And that would be something to let us know, and, and like I said, we'll come, meeting to meeting, and talk to you about anything that anyone sent us.
So the purpose of the ones that are, are in here, the ones that we don't necessarily need, I mean, some of them read like they're just a reiteration of the appropriate, you know, law, and then other ones, there might be some context added, but it's hard to, to be sure.
Some of them are, and some of them, obviously not the seven members here, but a, a, a prior board must have said, well, even though this is restating law, it might be important enough for us to have front and center, so that when we, or the community, or new board members look at something, they see that that one is of importance.
And Rick, are these recommendations from the Erie One BOSEs Policy Service that we're using?
Yes, and then any administrator who kind of oversees any of the section. So we, we've kind of put those together, along that way, and we'll continue with, with that process.
So that one's just informational. We ready to keep moving? We'll go on to the next one, which requires approval by the board. It's a field trip for the Model UN Club, fifteen students to go from March second to March fifth to Washington DC with their advisor. Fifteen students to go from March second to March fifth to Washington DC with their advisor.
Okay, any questions on it? Not, then a motion to approve the trip?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, we are come to our second public comment session. Ask you to step to the microphone, give your name and address so we can do follow-up if we need to. Okay. Before you are the meetings for up until May. We'll have our second budget session February twenty-seventh and then continue on with the regular meetings and alternating with the budget sessions as we get closer to needing to do a, a budget adoption and approval in May.
So just for everyone's edification, the budget meeting on February twenty-seventh will have all the enrollment projections, a review again of the executive budget and any changes that have occurred. The second draft really of the Clarence budget, which is close, along with the calculation of the tax cap. And we'll have some rationale for the bus purchase as well.
Any other questions, comments about that? Okay, then we need a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing the employment history of a particular person.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Have a good evening.